For city council meeting to order, please rise for the pledge to the flag. And now a moment of silence for all those who protect us home and abroad. Thank you. If everyone could mute your phones, your cell phones, please, it would be appreciated. Thank you. Let's see, is our liaison here tonight? No. Can you please call the roll?
President Laflambeau.
Here.
Roy Wagner.
Here.
Zagrowski.
Here.
Ariaga.
Here.
Brooks.
Here.
Koff.
Here.
Balkeer.
Here.
Krampitz.
Here.
Shumsky. Bouchain.
Here.
Labree.
Here.
Penny Castello.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Consular Shane Brooks is on Zoom this evening. Consular Shumsky called me. He's going to be running a little late. He had another appointment to be at, but he'll be here shortly. Okay. No, everybody on Zoom. In compliance with the open meeting law, the city of Chigaby is broadcasting live and for future broadcasts this meeting on Chigaby TV. Is anyone else in the audience or on Zoom video or auto taping this meeting, please state your name and reason for doing so. Is there anyone on the floor? Is there anyone on Zoom? Seeing none, we'll move into public input. Oh, I'm sorry, it's not public input. It's mayor's order.
Well, briefing.
Mayor's briefing. We have Chief of Staff Michael Pease to present the mayor's briefing.
Thank you, Consular. Good to see you today. The mayor, since his regrets, he could not attend today's meeting. He's at the Chigaby Conference of High School National Honors Society induction ceremony, providing the honors of induction to that group. And he wanted to make sure the students understand the value of leadership, character, service, and scholarship, and make sure that they understand that we don't just recognize sporting events, we want to recognize the academic achievements and the work of our students as well, and how important that is for them and their parents to celebrate that. So he sends his regrets. Get right into the mayor's orders. Mayor's Order 1 is ordered that the sum of $73,000 hereby appropriate to the following named account, mayor's salary account for Economic Development Director. As you can see from the background material, we have the job description attached. This is the position that the city council requested, and the mayor is happy to bring it forward to the honorable counsel. I don't know if there's any questions on that position or not, but I believe it's exactly what the council was looking for.
Consular Wagner.
I would just like to offer my thanks to the mayor's office for bringing this forward. It's a position that we used to have and that I think is very badly needed, and I wish you success in filling the role.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none, go outside, Mike.
Mayor's Order 2 ordered that the sum of $100,000 be hereby appropriate to the following named account, human resource expense account for special services. Said account is to be taken from the available funds of the following named human resources salary accounts, chief HR officer director account, $64,115.72, and the senior generalist account, $35,884.28, for a total of $100,000. And the mayor did give me a statement to read on his behalf. "We are asking for $100,000 in anticipation of engaging a consultant to not only assess the department, but provide support to the mayor as he runs the department while seeking new leadership for that department. Obviously, this will take some time, and we are asking for this conservative sum so we can be in good position to negotiate a contract and anticipate what the cost of those services might be over the next few months. We'll be issuing an RFP that will explore possible fee structures for the consultant responding with proposals. In order to ensure that we are able to engage a vendor as soon as possible, it is of the utmost importance to identify available funds. It may turn out to be more or less once we get responses, but the $100,000 is not necessarily for all the upfront fees and costs, but contemplates potential fees incurred over time. Recently, the CHRO was terminated as a result of two investigations conducted by Mary Lou Rupp, retired Superior Court Judge, and currently Senior Counsel at the Law from Buckley Richardson Jelenas. After the first investigation, a corrective action plan was prepared for the CHRO. However, within a matter of a few weeks, other serious issues developed, which created the second investigation. The findings and recommendation of the second investigation necessitated a change in leadership." You can't go into any further details due to the fact they are personnel issues. So that gives us some explanation of why the request for the $100,000 is there, to hire the consultant.
Thank you. Any comments? Seeing none. Oh, Consular Wagner.
Mr. Pease, would the council be able to be briefed in an executive session as to the specifics of this?
Not sure, because I believe the individual would have to be present in the executive session under open meeting law rules. So I don't know if he would attend, or I don't know how that would be accomplished.
Any other questions from the floor? Oh, Consular Castello.
In regards to this money, it's going to be only for a consultant, but not for a new HR director. Will the mayor continue as HR director on a temporary basis, and then this consultant will advise him?
So the mayor is acting as HR director now in the absence of having that position filled. The plan, as you said, is to hire a consultant and potentially have an interim person move in to that position. It's an anticipated, the amount would be about $100,000 over time. We're not sure exactly how long it will take to fill the position, but we want to make sure we get it right and do it correctly, and have the consultant determine what is needed for that department. And once we get the consultant's report, the request to fill the department, the position would go out, I believe, and we follow the normal hiring process. The one wrinkle is that we're approaching holidays, and with the holidays coming in, the timing of the process may be impacted by that.
I just have, I just have one more question.
Yeah.
Is it, it's legal, then, for the mayor to assume the role of acting HR director, and he will have the help with the consultant? Is that the goal here?
So we discussed this with the Law Department. The mayor is the acting HR director.
Okay.
Anyone else? Consular Koff.
Is there $100,000 left in the account?
Yes.
Salary account?
Yes, that's why we're doing a transfer, not an appropriation.
Because the year is half over. There's only a few months left.
It's from two positions. Two vacant positions. And the funds are in those accounts. We checked that with the auditor. The auditor verified the numbers.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none.
Mayor's Order Number 3, the mayor's appropriation of $32,500 to the following named accounts, police special account to purchase bulletproof vests from available funds in the stabilization account. This is the annual grant that the police work on, and they were able to obtain again this year. And in order to get the vests, we front the money, and then we get half back. And you'll see Mayor's Order Number 5 is the reimbursement from the grant. So Mayor's Order 3 appropriates the funds to do the initial purchase. The police chief is here. Chief Major can answer any questions, if you have them, about the use of the vest, but it's essential equipment to protect our officers.
Seeing none. Any questions? Seeing none.
Mayor's Order 4, ordered that the city council accept the SFY25 law enforcement body worn camera program in the amount of $249,932.70 from the Commonwealth of Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security to the Chigaby Police Department. Said grant is accepted in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53A. The city of Chigaby, under the direction of our police chief and our police department, have decided to go forward with body worn cameras for our officers, to protect the officers and the public as well. This is the first step. We were able to secure a grant, thanks to the work of the police department, to pay for the equipment, to purchase the cameras and the equipment necessary to begin the program. So accepting this grant will allow us to move forward with that program. The chief is here, if there's any questions as well.
Anyone have questions? Consular Roy.
Yes, Chief. $250,000, is that more for the cameras or for running the cameras?
That sum is going to cover the hardware only. That'll cover the body cameras and the attachments for them, and any other hardwares, maybe cables. As far as software, storage, redaction service that comes along with that, that is an additional cost.
That's going to be separate? Do you have any idea what that's going to be?
I believe that we were going to discuss that at a meeting next week.
Thank you, Chief.
Consular Wagner.
My question was answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Consular Balakir.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Chief, for this valuable grant. I'm curious. Will this be rolled out with all the officers, or is this going to be kind of like a pilot program that some of the officers, it's going to be like a group first to see how it works? And can you shed some light on that, please?
Sure. The funding that we receive is going to cover 135 body cameras, and they're going to give us an additional five spares. So the thought is, is that we're going to do the officers that are on the street, 24/7, patrol officers, traffic officers, C3 officers. There might be some administrative officers that don't get issued cameras, but we would have spares available for them for when they are on the street.
Okay, thank you. Follow-up question. So as soon as this gets appropriated and you have the cameras, when is this, when is your anticipated start date with this?
The grant, I believe, calls for a deadline of July 1st to have the program implemented. The hope is that depending on when we get the equipment in and get it up and running, that we would do a soft rollout first, just so we can get the bugs worked out. Small percentage of the officers. Once that's completed, then we would do a total implementation. Like I said, the deadline for the grant itself is to have this program rolled out by July 1st. I can't give you a definitive timeline, sir, until we actually get the equipment in.
All right, thanks, Chief. Thank you.
Any other comments from Consular Castello?
Thank you, Chief, for all your work in this, in this particular request. This is something that many of my constituents have asked about, if the police department will be starting body cameras. And I can't, I can't thank you enough, Chief. And what I do like is, in your presentation for our paperwork, you've got the timeline right down to the last second, so we know what to expect, when to, when to expect this to be of a full rollout. So thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Any comments from Zoom? I would like to ask a question. So Chief, regarding the body cameras, my understanding is, right now, the union, the patrolmen's unions approve this and...
Correct.
You just, and you're now working on just the...
The supervisors' union?
Not yet.
And they're, they're currently in negotiations, and they're aware that we're asking for the body cameras. There is good faith negotiations going on right now.
All right, thank you. Okay, we're all set. Mike, next one.
Next order is Mayor's Order Number 5, which I referred to earlier. Ordered that the city council accept FY 2024 Patrick Leahy Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program in the amount of $20,740.32 from the U.S. Department of Justice, Bureau of Justice Assistance, to the Chigaby Police Department. Said award is accepted in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53A. This is the half payment for the bulletproof vests that we were able to obtain from a grant, thanks to the work of the police chief and the police department. Any questions on the grant?
Consular Balakir.
Yeah, thank you, Michael. Chief, quick question. Is this, is this for 28 vests? Is that the number that we're looking at here?
So the current request, I believe it was Mayor's Order 2, that was to cover a total of 25 vests, which includes 18 replacement vests, which have reached the end of their service life, and also seven new vests for the officers that we currently have in the FTO program.
Okay, thank you, because there was a reference in the documentation that was provided in Mayor's Order Number 5. I saw grand total of 28 for $42,000, so I didn't know if, if there was a difference. I just wanted to try to get an idea what the correct total was on that.
For which Mayor's Order did you reference, sir?
Mayor's Order Number 5. A couple pages, and I see a grand total of 28.
That could have been for a previous purchaser, and we're just getting reimbursed for that now.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to make sure we're on the same page with the numbers. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none.
Mayor's Order 6, ordered that the city council accept FY 2024 COSSAP grant as a part of the DART program in the amount of $2,500 from the City of Northampton Department of Health and Human Services to the Chigaby Police Department. The goal of said grant is to support people and communities impacted by substance abuse, opioid overdose, and fatalities, and is accepted in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53A. This is, again, we were fortunate enough to receive this grant. The city of Northampton is a grant administrator for the region, so they provide the funding to the different cities and towns. This is the DART program that helps people who have suffered or been narcanned or are addicted to drugs to receive ongoing services, wellness visits, and be counseled, in a sense, by our police officers, to make sure that they, they have every opportunity to overcome their addiction.
Thank you. Any comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none.
Mayor's Order 7 is that the city council accept the FY 2025 Municipal Road Safety Program Grant in the amount of $59,790 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security to the Chigaby Police Department. Said grant is accepted in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53A. This grant is also a result of the police department going forward, looking for ways and methods to reduce fatalities on our road, to reduce speeding, to ensure pedestrian and bike safety on our streets. They were able to secure this grant and put additional resources into those programs.
Thank you. Any comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none.
Thank you for your consideration. Mayor's Order 8 is the appropriation of $25,000 to the following named account, Registered Expense Account for Special Services from available funds in the Registered Passport Revolving Account. This is something that we've done every year. We underfund the census in the budget by about $20,000, knowing that we will receive the passport income from our passport program. We then use the funds in the passport program to fully fund the census. So we appreciate your consideration and continuing to make sure we have a valid, accurate census in the city.
Thank you. Any comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none.
Mayor's Order Number 9 is, actually, there's a typo on that order, so I'm asking that the council respectfully withdraw that order, and we'll resubmit it with the correct dates.
Okay.
Mayor's Order 10, I believe, is... Is this council president's order?
Is... Nope, that's not, which one? Oh, yes, this is the one I signed.
Yes, this is the one that the mayor had a slight conflict.
Bob, you're going to have to do number 10. Mayor's Order 10. Read it. We're talking about Mayor's Order 10.
Correct.
Nine, it's withdrawn. They would like it to be withdrawn. Just read that.
Ordered that sum of $43,826 be hereby appropriated to the attached named general fund salary account in accordance with the recently signed agreement between the city of Chigaby and the Chigaby Professional Municipal Employees Association. Said amount is to be taken from available funds in a stabilization account. Any questions on this? Evidently, this has to do with contract negotiations. Anybody on Zoom? No questions? Okay.
Mayor's Order...
Thank you. Mayor's Order 11. Mayor's appropriation of $4,778.30 to the following named accounts, DPW Water Fund Salary Accounts, in accordance with a recently signed agreement between the city of Chigaby and the Chigaby Professional Municipal Employees Association, from available funds in the water surplus account. This is similar to the mayor's order 10, but the water department has a separate account to pay their salaries from the water fund, so it's a separate appropriation. This is to fund the rest of the year, the salary increases that were negotiated in that contract.
Any questions from the floor? Any questions from Zoom? Seeing none.
Mayor's Order 12 is the appropriation of $9,634.56 from the following named account, DPW Sewer Fund Salary Accounts, in accordance with the recently signed agreement between the city of Chigaby and the Chigaby Professional Municipal Employees Association, from available funds in the sewer surplus account. Again, we successfully negotiated the contract, and this is to fund the salary increases for the rest of the year out of the sewer account. Again, the sewer account's another separate account, so you have to do a separate appropriation.
Thank you. Mayor's Order 13.
I believe it's yours.
Ordered that the city council accept the state financed year 2025 Community Transit Grant Program Award in the amount of $87,482 from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation to the Chigaby Council on Aging. Said grants will be used for the purchase of a TE van to support, to support the ongoing efforts to provide meaningful transportation options for older adults and individuals with disabilities, and is accepted in accordance with Mass General Law 54, Section 53A. Any questions? Mayor's Order 14. Mayor appropriation of $29,160 to the following named account, Council on Aging, Special Accounts for City Share of 2024 Community Transit Grant Award for a Type E van from available funds in the stabilization fund. And that's it for, any questions? That's it for the mayor's.
Just one comment. The mayor wanted me to tell everyone that on Monday, we had a very successful meeting of the MSBA Design Selection Board, and for the Anna Berry School project, Kalu and Benick was selected as the designer. I think you're very familiar with a lot of their projects, and they, they're a Chigaby firm, and we're very happy to move forward with that program. Thank you all. Have a nice Veterans Day.
Thank you, Michael. We will now move into public input. Public input is limited to three minutes or less. Is anyone in the audience here for public input? If so, come to the mic over here on your right, and give your name and address for the record, please.
Hi.
Thank you.
My name is Julie LaRue. I live at 58 Carew Street, Chigaby, Massachusetts, and I have two concerns.
Is the mic on?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can. If you could just...
Okay. First of all, I want to compliment Frank Laflambeau. We did send a letter from the St. Stanislaus Parish Bazaar because he donated the grill. It was an excellent adjunct to our bazaar and made a huge difference. So please give a round of applause to Frank because of the service of the community.
Right. I received a letter to ask to be read, and I refused to have it done, so...
I was going to make sure you got credit for what you did.
Thank you anyways.
Secondly, now I have to express some concerns. I know a lot of people remember that I live on Carew Street, across from the food bank. And one of the biggest concerns that we said was what would happen with the wetlands based upon this. Well, now, we have homeless camping in the wetlands. I know that it's been addressed to the police department, but it is a big concern. In fact, if this continues, you have to realize, with all the fires that are going around, and it's right in back of Stan's Auto Body Shop, that this is a big concern. It is an at-risk thing. The police have tried to address it, but I really think that one of the things that maybe the city could do is consider more cameras for security. We have had, literally on Carew Street, including my own car, three robberies along that street, as well as a car that was completely taken. So the bottom line is that we're facing an increased risk with... with the violence that is occurring along the street. And when I have a homeless right across the street from me, I'm concerned about my care and my health. And the other thing that has come up about it, and I'm not sure if the council is aware of it. I know Andrew Morehouse has expressed concerns to us that when we have addressed concerns of cars, trucks idling there, they had one situation where one of the drivers said that he had guns in the truck. Now, that makes me very concerned. The average turnaround time for us to call the police and get it there is very long. I understand because of the fact of what the police has to do right now. But I think one of the ways that this could be addressed is if we considered increasing the amount of security cameras by some way with the city, and it would make a difference in that respect. I'm concerned because I expressed when we had this whole thing about the food bank that the wetlands would be at risk. Well, if you have homeless camping in them, it is a risk. So I'd like you to think about that, and maybe you guys could approach with the city to see if there's any way we can get additional security cameras along that strip. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lisa Bianveneux, 34 Everett Street. I feel like it's Groundhog's Day here because, again, on the agenda, it said mayor view, only mayor view, but we had Mr. Pease speaking. So apparently, when I brought it to your attention before, that you needed to pay attention, what's on the agendas, per the open meeting laws, you don't pay attention because that's not mayor view. And, you know, I'm glad that the mayor is at Chicagabe Camp, talking about leadership and stuff. We also need leadership here at City Hall and in the departments because it's very concerning the contest order against the Chicagabe Housing Authority. And I just want to read this from the Community Legal Aid concerning that discrimination from the Chicagabe Housing Authority. "Community Legal Aid is pleased to announce that a comprehensive settlement has been reached in United States v. Chicagabe Housing Authority. In the case, Community Legal Aid represented three individuals who alleged that the Chicagabe Housing Authority and its former executive director engaged in unlawful housing discrimination." Wow. "Against people with disabilities engaged in race and national origin discrimination and retaliated against an individual who was cooperating with a federal investigation." Well, isn't that a concern? Everybody in this room should be concerned about the people in our community who need our help, who are being discriminated against. And then I hear that, you know, we have to do something with HR, and the mayor is stepping in. Well, I certainly hope you guys pick a consultant, not from the pool that we've already had, because clearly, there is some kind of a systemic problem in City Hall because we have been churning people through HR. So is it City Hall or is it HR? I'm not convinced which one it is. This board has control over who is appointed to the Housing Authority Commission, but when you listen to these appointment things, everybody says, "Oh, we all know them. Oh, they're good guys. Oh, I do things with them. They've been on the board before." That's what I hear. No reason to really look into them. Well, you know what? We had $215,000 that went to those litigants. There was a $460,000 decree that was ordered. Where is that money coming from? And who is protecting our citizens with disabilities?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public input?
Hi, Mary Beth Costello, 66 Voss Avenue. Several residents have voiced concerns in regards to the conditions of the playing fields for children in our parks. I want this known to the city council that that particular issue has been brought to the attention to the mayor's office and to other officials as well. So that's the hope, I guess, of many people, that we can look at the conditions of the playing fields in our parks so that when the children do play soccer or any other event, that the fields are safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for public input from the audit?
Sue Nimchik, James Street. Scoring notebook continues. But before I begin, Mike Peasey, I remember about, whoa, 1975. Junior year, I was inducted into the National Honor Society, senior year also, and I was elected as VP. My topic of speech, hopefully John View will do well, was service. And here I am, how many years later, still talking about service and duty and principles and what's people's rights and democracy and votes and everything. Should have been forewarning for me, let's put it that way. As for scoring book, every sport has one, especially baseball, softball. And it's great because you know where you are. I was doing Zoom, thank you, Frank, the other day for the tax meeting, and I heard about, you know, we're an old city, therefore, infrastructure and everything, finite amount of land. Read a few months ago about comprehensive planning. These are all so basic in planning and fundamentals that any board, any city official should be considering in any decision going forward, in the past, present and future. This way, guess what? We're not encountering and growing mess or public safety issues. It's that fundamental. And also, always encouraging, what I talked about last time I was here, about the no vote, NO, not wanting, you know, debate hard questions asked by Tim or some of the younger ones, younger, no fault of the older ones here, younger in terms of presence here. So that everything is known, especially at committee meetings, for what? Proper decisions, proper policy, proper voting. And turn that NO vote against all these things, especially documentation and factors, so that it's a K-N-O-W vote for the right reasons, for forward movement, solving and avoiding problems, and therefore, guess what? Service. In other words, the average individual, resident, taxpayer, voter, all rode into one like a jelly roll when we were kids or a chocolate Swiss roll. Delicious. I don't see that happening. Just because you're a body of 13, it doesn't mean 13 is an unlucky number. Where is the duty of the service? Okay? And if you weave all this together, then there is always a comprehensive view. And it's not finite, it's about limited land or anything. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else for public input from? No one? Is there anyone on Zoom for public input? Is there anyone on Zoom for public input? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to close.
Motion to close public input.
Motion made in second to close public input. Roll call, please.
President Laflamme.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zagorowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Falcone.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Chomsky. Kushein.
Yes.
Labree.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
13 yes.
And a motion passes. I'd just like to acknowledge the liaison for the school department, Sandra Perret, here this evening. Thank you for being here. Okay, any communications? Any minutes?
Yes, one set of minutes, September 17th.
Concha Chomsky.
Motion that we approve the minutes of September 17th.
Motion made in second, we approved the minutes of September 17th regular meeting.
Self-explanatory.
Thank you. Any comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Roll call, please.
President Laflamme.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zagorowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff. Falcone.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Chomsky.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labree.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
13 yes.
And a motion passes. We'll go into the orders.
Sure. Order one. Order that the sum of $73,000 be hereby appropriated to the following named account: Mayor Salary Account for Economic Development Director. Said amount is to be taken from the available funds in the Stabilization Fund.
Concha Brooks. Concha Brooks?
Make a motion that the mayor's order be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor.
Motion made in second, the motion be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor. On the motion, please.
On the motion, this is for $73,000. This is going to be used for Economic Development Director and potentially hiring a new position within the city.
Thank you very much. Any comments from the floor? Concha Wagner first.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a position, and I thank the councilors for backing me on this, that we had requested be made in place of the Associate Planner for Economic Development, that they would have paid less than $50,000. That would have been an Economic Development Director, Grant Writer and Project Manager, all in one. So I'm pleased to see with this job description, what they did is they scaled back the amount of responsibilities to being a liaison to our business partners and to this council. I hope that this council can be open to some of the projects that this person, whoever that is, brings forward. We all know, and many of us made mention of certain ordinances that were passed recently that we would like to, you know, move beyond at some point and to work collaboratively with our business partners in the community to bring new growth so that we can shift the burden, the tax burden, off of our residents onto some of the businesses in the community. Because the cost of everything is going up. As we all know, we just approved a shift in the tax rate, which the state will have to check the numbers on, and the average tax bill is going to be going up by over $200. So I think it's imperative that we bring some new ideas and some new development to the city so that we can help offset some of those concerns for our residents citywide. And I hope that the residents can be open to having some of these projects popping up where we have the land and the space for them. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Concha Ariaga.
Thanks, Tim, for those comments. Like I said on Monday, proof that the burden has fallen on the taxpayers. So I really hope that this position does what it needs to, and I'm really excited to see Chicagabe move forward and definitely looking forward to new growth. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflamme.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Enthusiastic, yes.
Zagorowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Falcone.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Chomsky.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labree.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
13 yes.
And a motion passes.
Order that the sum of $100,000 be hereby appropriated to the following named account: Human Resource Expense Account for Special Services. Said amount is to be taken from the available funds in the following named Human Resource Salary Accounts. Chief HR Officer Director, $64,115.72. Senior Generalist, $35,884.28, for a total of $100,000.
Concha Goff.
Motion that the mayor's order be received and referred to the HR Committee.
Motion made in second, the order be received and sent to the HR Committee for a public hearing. On the motion, please.
I know the money is there from this account, but I'd really like to have more information on who they would be hiring as a consultant. Consultants normally charge anywhere from $100 to $300 per hour or go by the amount of employees that we have. So I know he put in an RPO, and I'd really like to see where this stands.
Okay. Any other comments from the floor? Concha Costello.
Yes, I agree with Counselor Goff that this should be in the HR Committee for review. This isn't something that we normally do. This is something that came up as an event and that has to be addressed. And I think doing it through HR, through a public hearing, would be the appropriate way to inform the public of what's happening in regards to finances for this department. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Concha Kushein.
Through the chair to our attorney, can we actually go out to bid on something we haven't funded?
The money's there, and if you approve it, the money's there.
But we're not. We're sitting in the committee, so we can't go to RFP without money to back it up. That's why I just want to clarify.
I couldn't hear the question.
We can't go out to bid on a position without money being allocated.
I don't know that answer. I'd have to go back there.
Concha Wagner.
Mr. President, feel free to answer because you were here the last time this happened. Most of you were. We had, the council had to approve the contract with whoever the consultant was. Is that correct?
I believe I did.
Okay. So in that event, I'm going to be in favor of passing this tonight if we have a contract before us and we do not like who it is. And at that time, I would be, I would consider voting no on something. But for right now, the search, as far as I'm aware, can't continue without the appropriation for it. But I would, you know, at a later time, I would be more amenable to a no vote if, say, we don't like the person that's come forward as a consultant. Thank you.
Okay. I just want to clarify, Tim, that I'm not sure if I was on it, okay? I've been on so many committees. If you're asking if I sat on it...
Oh, I was just asking if the council took a vote on who, on the...
I don't think, as a council, we did. I don't think we did. We funded it, and that was it.
Mr. President, I don't think the council has the power to decide who to hire and fire. I believe that's an executive function.
No, we don't.
Of the mayor.
I don't think so either.
So through the chair to the attorney, at the end of the day, we approved the contract for whoever the permanent HR director would be, correct?
I don't know that's true. I know you, as a body, you would approve the appropriation. But I believe hiring and firing is the mayor's prerogative, just because he's the executive.
All right. Well, I know that's not the case for some of the departments, so thank you, Tim.
Okay. So right now, any other questions from the floor? Any questions from Zoom? Okay, so right now, it's being sent to the HR... Okay. I remember, make a mo... I think we should send this to Finance because it's a financial...
It could go there or Finance.
Right?
Traditionally, a financial order would go to Finance. You could do Human Resources or Finance.
And I can do a meeting right away.
Just traditionally, a financial order would go to Finance. It could go either way. Do you want to say what HR...
It's got to be friendly to you. You want to leave it in HR? She wants, I can see her face.
I would like to leave it in HR, yes.
Okay. Just have to speak up. Don't... Okay, so right now, the motion is to send it to HR this evening. Roll call.
President Laflamme.
No.
Roy.
No.
Wagner.
Yes.
I need to get it done.
Zagorowski.
No.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
No.
Goff.
Yes.
Falcone.
No.
Crapitz.
No.
Chomsky.
No.
Kushein.
No.
Labree.
No.
Pinia Costello.
Abstain, and I have a medical reason to do the abstention. I should have done it on number one. I had a procedure today, and I've been advised that I can come to the meeting and I can speak and make comments. But in regards to driving and doing any work in regards to legal matters, I cannot...
Thank you.
I cannot participate.
For you, if you didn't hear it, she has to abstain from all votes, okay? Thank you.
All right, so three yes, nine no, one abstention. Yes, motions to go to committee is defeated.
Yes.
So...
Now we have the motion to approve.
We need a motion to...
Yeah, we need a motion to approve.
Finance?
No, the motion to approve the money. Concha Wagner.
Make a motion that the mayor's order be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor.
Motion made in second, the order be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor. On the motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's funds to go out for a contractor for consultant for the Human Resource Department to assist the mayor in running it in the interim.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflamme.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zagorowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
No.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
No.
Falcone.
Yes.
Yes.
Crumpets?
Yes.
Chomsky?
Yes.
Kushein?
Yes.
Labree?
Yes.
Ten yes, two no.
And a motion passes.
Order that the sum of $32,500 be hereby appropriate to the following named account, Police Special Account for Purchase of Bulletproof Vests. Said amounts be taken from the available funds in the stabilization fund.
Counsel Kushein.
Motion that the mayor's order be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor.
Motion made and seconded, the mayor's order be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor. On the motion, please.
This is going to purchase 25 vests, 18 are replacements, the only last five years, and then seven for the new recruits. And through the skill and diligence of our police department's grant writer, this will be refunded to us back through two different grants, as it has traditionally for many, many, many years.
Okay. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Roll call, please.
President Laflambeau?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zegarowski?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Valkir?
Yes.
Crumpets?
Yes.
Chomsky?
Yes.
Kushein?
Yes.
Labree?
Yes.
Twelve yes.
And a motion passes.
Order that the City Council accept the SFY 25 Law Enforcement Body-Worn Camera Program in the amount of $249,932.70 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security to the Chicagoe Police Department. Said grant is accepted in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 44, Section 53A.
Counsel Chomsky.
Motion that the mayor's order be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of...
Motion made and seconded, the mayor's order be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor. On the motion, please.
Yes, this is a body-worn camera program for $249,000, and it will be used for our police officers. I think this is a great program. I believe the police officers will appreciate it, the community will appreciate it, and I hope it passes this evening.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Counsel Costello.
I want to thank the police chief and the police department for their initiative in regards to this. They're definitely moving our police department forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflambeau?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zegarowski?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Valkir?
Yes.
Crumpets?
Yes.
Chomsky?
Yes.
Kushein?
Yes.
Labree?
Yes.
One abstention.
And a motion passes.
Order that the City Council accept the FY 2024 Patrick Leahy Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program in the amount of $20,740.32 from the U.S. Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance to the Chicagoe Police Department. Said award is accepted in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 44, Section 53A.
Counsel Valkir.
Motion that the mayor's order be received, passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor.
Motion made and seconded, the motion be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor. On the motion, please.
On the motion, the Chicagoe Police Department has been awarded $20,740.32 under the Patrick Leahy Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program. And this award is going to reimburse the city for half the cost of qualified bulletproof vests for our officers that was referenced in a previous order of 25 vests. So I'm in favor of this, and it's great to get reimbursed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflambeau?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zegarowski?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Valkir?
Yes.
Crumpets?
Yes.
Chomsky?
Yes.
Kushein?
Yes.
Labree?
Yes.
Twelve yes, one abstention.
And a motion passes.
Order that the City Council accept the FY 2024 COSOP grant as part of the DART program, the amount of $2,500 from the Chicagoe Northampton Department of Health and Human Services to the Chicagoe Police Department. The goal of said grant is to support people and communities impacted by substance abuse, opioid overdose, and fatalities, and is accepted in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 44, Section 53A.
Counsel Zegarowski.
Same course, Mr. President.
Motion made and seconded, that the mayor's order be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor. On the motion, please.
This is our portion of money that's owed to the City of Northampton who administers this program for various communities with substance abuse and opioid overdose.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflambeau?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zegarowski?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Valkir?
Yes.
Crumpets?
Yes.
Chomsky?
Yes.
Kushein?
Yes.
Labree?
Yes.
Twelve yes, one abstention.
And a motion passes.
Order that the City Council accept the FY 2025 Municipal Road Safety Program Grant in the amount of $59,790 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security to the Chicagoe Police Department. Said grant is accepted in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 44, Section 53A.
Okay, let's see, we're up to Counsel... Oh, Labree, I'm sorry. I was, I was stuck here a minute with your attorney. Sorry about that.
Motion that the mayor's order be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor and the grant be accepted this evening.
Motion made and seconded, the motion be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor and the grant approved this evening. On the motion.
On the motion, this is almost $60,000, and the chief has said that he's going to use it for additional patrol focusing on road safety concerns, traffic pedestrian. He's also going to use it for some bicycle training courses and other safety programs and equipment relating to pedestrian and bicycle safety.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Counsel Ariaga.
We all know that public safety is definitely high on our list of priorities here within the city, so I'm excited to see this and hope that we can keep continuing to make our streets safer.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflambeau?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zegarowski?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Valkir?
Yes.
Crumpets?
Yes.
Chomsky?
Yes.
Kushein?
Yes.
Labree?
Yes.
Twelve yes, one abstention.
And a motion passes.
Order that the sum of $25,000 be hereby appropriate to the following named account, Registered Expense Account for Special Services. Said amounts be taken from the available funds in the Registarr's Passport Revolving Account.
Counsel Roy.
Motion that the mayor's order be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor.
Motion made and seconded, that the motion be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor. On the motion, please.
On the motion, the Board of Registarr's Voters respectfully request the following transfers of available funds for conducting the state-mandated annual city census. The amount requested is $25,000. The transfer is necessary as the funding for conducting the annual city census was reduced over the years from $22,000 in 1990 to the current $5,000, making it impossible to cover the cost of contacting over 24,000 households as required by Mass. General Laws, Chapter 51, Section 4.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflambeau?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zegarowski?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Valkir?
Yes.
Crumpets?
Yes.
Chomsky?
Yes.
Kushein?
Yes.
Labree?
Yes.
Twelve yes, one abstention.
And a motion passes.
We have a new appointment of Denise Longerville as a member of the License Commission.
Counsel Wagner.
My apologies. Which order, nine or 10?
Nine.
Oh, yes. A motion that the mayor's order be withdrawn this evening.
Motion made and seconded, the mayor's order be withdrawn this evening. On the motion, please.
On the motion, Mike Pease, the mayor's chief of staff, informed us tonight that there's a typo in the order, so they're going to have to withdraw and resubmit.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflambeau?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zegarowski?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Valkir?
Yes.
Crumpets?
Yes.
Chomsky?
Yes.
Kushein?
Yes.
Labree?
Yes.
Twelve yes, one abstention.
And a motion passes.
Order that the sum of $43,826.88 be hereby appropriate to the attached named General Fund Salary Accounts in accordance with the recently signed agreement between the City of Chicagoe and the Chicagoe Professional Municipal Employees Association. Said amounts be taken from the available funds in the stabilization fund.
Councilman Crumpets.
Motion that the mayor's order be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor.
Motion made and seconded, that the motion be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor. On the motion.
Yeah, this is contractual for the pay increases that the Chicagoe Professional Municipal Employees Association received. For those of us that were on the council years ago, it used to be informally referred to as the department heads' union, even though that really wasn't a union. But this is essentially to fulfill the contractual obligations for the raises that they received in their contracts. Thank you.
Anybody else on the floor? Anybody on Zoom? Anybody on Zoom? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Wagner.
Now, this is just for my own curiosity, because I am still new to all of this. So wouldn't this amount normally have come from the tax levy that we just approved the shift in the rate for? Instead of one-time stabilization funds, Mr. President?
I can't talk about it. I signed the contract.
What, Mr. President, in this case referring to Mr. Zegarowski?
I don't have an answer for you, but Councilman Crumpets.
I believe it's because it was recently approved, and therefore it was not included in the budget. And therefore, in order to be able to fund these raises, it came out of stabilization. So I think that's why it wasn't part of the tax levy or tax rate that we set the other night.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I'll sit, Councilman Wagner. Anybody else on Zoom? Roll call, please.
President Laflambeau?
Abstain.
Roy?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zegarowski?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Valkir?
Yes.
Crumpets?
Yes.
Chomsky?
Yes.
Kushein?
Yes.
Labree?
Yes.
Eleven yes, two abstentions. Motion passes. Order that the sum of $4,778.30 be hereby appropriate to the attached DPW Water Fund Salary Accounts in accordance with the recently signed agreement between the City of Chicagoe and the Chicagoe Professional Municipal Employees Association. Said amounts be taken from the water surplus account.
Counsel Costello.
Motion that the mayor's order be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor.
Motion made and seconded, the motion be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor.
On the motion, this is very similar to the explanation that Counselor Crumpets gave in his motion. It's to address the signed agreement between the City of Chicagoe and the Chicagoe Professional Municipal Employees Association.
Thank you. Any comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflambeau?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zegarowski?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Valkir?
Yes.
Crumpets?
Yes.
Chomsky?
Yes.
Kushein?
Yes.
Labree?
Yes.
Pinney, Costello?
It's okay.
Twelve yes, one abstention.
And a motion passes.
Order that the sum of $9,634.56 be hereby appropriate to the attached named DPW Sewer Salary Accounts in accordance with the recently signed agreement between the City of Chicagoe and the Chicagoe Professional Municipal Employees Association. Said amounts be taken from the sewer surplus account.
Counsel Ariaga.
Motion that the mayor's order be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor.
Motion made and seconded, that the mayor's order be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor. On the motion, please.
This goes hand in hand with the first two. This is for the DPW. This is their salaries.
Thank you very much. Any comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflambeau?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zegarowski?
Yes.
Ariaga? Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Valkir?
Yes.
Crumpets?
Yes.
Chomsky?
Yes.
Kushein?
Yes.
Labree?
Yes.
Twelve yes, one abstention. Motion passes.
And a motion passes.
Order that the City Council accept the State Fiscal Year 2024 Community Transit Grant Program Award in the amount of $87,482 from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation to the Chicagoe Council on Aging. Said grant will be used for the purchase of a type E van to support the ongoing efforts to provide meaningful transportation options for older adults and individuals with disabilities, and is accepted in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 44, Section 53A.
Councilman Brooks? Councilman Brooks?
Motion that the mayor's order be received and pass, motion that the mayor's order be received and passed through all stages on the recommendation of the mayor.
Motion that the mayor's order be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation. On the motion.
On the motion, this is a grant that will allow the purchase of a van to help with the transportation of the folks who are in need.
Anybody else on the floor? Ms. Ariaga?
I just want to say this is awesome. You know, there's so many people that need help commuting and things like this. They're definitely what the community needs, and I'm happy to see this come across tonight, so. what the community needs and I'm happy to see this come across tonight, so.
Anybody else? Anybody on Zoom? Anybody on Zoom? On the motion. Roll call, please.
President Laflambeau, Roy Wagner, Zegorowski, Ariaga, Brooks.
Yes.
Goff, Valkir, Crapitz, Chomsky, Kushein, Labree. Eleven yes, two abstentions.
And a motion passes. Counselor Brooks, could you do a test for me? When I ask you, can you just say yes? Do you hear me?
Yes.
Do you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, we want to make sure the delay was not a problem with you because it's being delayed by your voice. Thank you.
Yeah, well, it's being delayed on your end as well. Every time the clerk speaks, there's some interruption.
Okay, thank you. That's the problem. Okay, we'll let them know upstairs. I'm sure he hears us.
Order that the sum of $29,160 being hereby appropriate to the following named account. Council on Aging Special Account for City Share of 2024 Community Transit Grant Award for Type E Van. Said amounts be taken from the available funds in the stabilization fund.
Councilman Goff.
Motion that the mayor's order be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor.
Motion made in second that the motion be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor. On the motion.
On the motion, this is a 20% shared or 20% of the grant that the city is required to fund for the van on the previous order. So for the van with people with disabilities and the elderly.
Anybody else on the floor? Ms. Costello.
Thank you, Counselor Zegorowski. You are the dean of our board, so thank you. In regards to this, I can't vote on it, but I'm very happy that this is city money being used to fund the balance of the van that Counselor Ariaga referenced in regards to the need of the elderly and the disability issues in our city. Without transportation, many of these people would be totally lost, so it's a great, great situation we're in right now that we have an active council on aging that's addressing the transportation needs of the elderly and the disabled. Thank you.
Anyone else on the floor? Anybody on Zoom? Anybody on Zoom? Call the roll.
President Laflambeau, Roy Wagner, Zegorowski, Ariaga, Brooks.
Yes.
Goff, Valkir, Crapitz, Chomsky, Kushein, Labree. Eleven yes, two abstentions. Motion passes. We have a favorable report from the ordinance committee with a motion to postpone for, be it ordered that the city council, be it ordered by the city council, that the code of the city council, code of the city of Chicagee for the year 1991 as amended, being hereby further amended as follows, at Chapter 278, offenses against public peace.
Counselor Crapitz.
Motion that the favorable ordinance committee report be received and postponed to the call of the chair.
Motion made in second that the favorable ordinance committee report be received and postponed to the call of the chair. On the motion.
Well, first of all, this was actually filed by Counselor Kushein. Somehow it got labeled as Counselor Piniak Costello, but it was filed by Counselor Kushein and he wanted it postponed because he was looking into some issue of things to make some changes, so I'll turn it over to Counselor Kushein.
Counselor Kushein.
Yeah, unfortunately, the revised version did not make it into this agenda. The old original one was there, but even at that, this is a very tricky slippery slope that we have to legally go through, so I'm going to be reaching out to the district attorney's office to have him review it. As it stands, this order has actually been enacted by another state, another city in another state for the last two years and has upheld the test of time, but we have a little stricter laws, not just the Supreme Court of the country, but of our state. And it's just going to be really tricky to, every time you correct one thing, you've created another problem, unfortunately, but we're going to keep working on it. I think it's important to the residents. We get a lot of feedback about this issue and there's multiple chapters in this, not just about the panhandling. The other ones will go, no problem, but I'm just going to keep it as one package and we'll pass it through if I can get the language right hopefully soon.
Thank you. Counselor Valkir.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I'm interested in seeing this go through fruition. This panhandling issue is really becoming a serious issue in the city and I've had several constituents query me about it and ask me what's going on. So I'm hopeful that we're going to come up with a resolution and we're going to be able to handle this properly legally and so on and so forth. Thank you.
Counselor Wagner.
Thank you, and while I think these sorts of ordinances are important, I don't think that I can stress enough that we have to work collaboratively with other communities in Western Massachusetts, with our partners at the state level, to address the root cause of why we have panhandlers. So, I mean, in stating these sorts of ordinances, if the time ever comes, is all well and good, but I think we just have to really look at the root cause and focus on helping people rather than outlawing whatever it is that they're doing, although that may be fine in the interim. Thank you.
Counselor Kushein.
So to address my colleagues' comments, so that is actually in the process. I've been working with the mayor's office on my hub order that I put in a few weeks or months ago. And just to give you a real quick snippet, Chelsea had 130 homeless people. With this program that I proposed, they had three left in one year. So we will get to the root cause of that. But the other cause is what they're doing is dangerous. What they're doing is not wrong, it's just they're doing it in a dangerous fashion. Unfortunately, the state considers, the Supreme Court says it's freedom of speech, but the state allows them to stand in the middle of the road because that's public property. So as you can see now, that's going to be very difficult to manage or to ordinate.
Thank you. Counselor Costello.
Thank you, Counselor Kushein. My question was in regards to the legality of this type of ordinance and you addressed it in regards to what the court has said. As long as we're legal, we can continue to review it and see what would make the most sense for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflambeau, Roy Wagner, Zegorowski, Ariaga, Brooks.
Yes.
Goff, Valkir, Crapitz, Chomsky, Kushein, Labree. Twelve yes, one abstention.
And a motion passes.
We have a favorable report from the ordinance committee to add to the following in schedule Parking Prohibited Lucretia Avenue.
Counselor Crapitz.
Motion that the amended favorable ordinance committee report take its second and final reading and be enrolled and ordained this evening.
Motion made in second that the favorable amended ordinance committee report be received, take its second and final reading and be enrolled and ordained. On the motion, please.
Yeah, as you can see by the backup material, there was some additional wording that was added after Counselor Kushein spoke to our city engineer Doug Ellis. So that was amended at our ordinance committee meeting, so that should pass as amended tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflambeau, Roy Wagner, Zegorowski, Ariaga, Brooks.
Yes.
Goff, Valkir, Crapitz, Chomsky, Kushein, Labree. Twelve yes, one abstention.
Thank you. So just so everybody knows, Shane will be delayed a little bit. They would have to reset the whole program and it would take too long. We can wait a couple of seconds for him to reply. Thank you.
We have a favorable report from the ordinance committee. Be it ordained that Chapter 7 of the ordinance of the city of Chicagee as amended, being hereby further amended as follows. Parking Recreation Department Group 4, add recreation supervisor $25 per game. Said ordinance to be operative upon passage.
Counselor Crapitz.
Motion that the favorable ordinance committee report take its second and final reading and be enrolled and ordained tonight.
Motion made in second that the favorable ordinance committee report be received, take its second and final reading, be enrolled and ordained. On the motion, please. On the motion.
This is a new position that is being funded. There will be multiple supervisors for different locations and they will be assigned as needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflambeau, Roy Wagner, Zegorowski, Ariaga, Brooks.
Yes.
Goff, Valkir, Crapitz, Chomsky, Kushein, Labree. Twelve yes, one abstention.
And a motion passes.
We have a favorable report for an amended ordinance committee report, be it ordained at the city council, the code of the city of Chicagee for the year 1991 as amended, being hereby further amended as follows, at Chapter 260-37.1, engine brakes prohibited. Add Chicagee Street at .300 feet north of Prospect Street.
North to Prospect, yeah. Okay, Counselor Crapitz.
Motion that the amended favorable ordinance committee report take its second and final reading and be enrolled and ordained this evening.
Motion that the favorable ordinance committee amended report be received and approved this evening. On the motion, please. Take its second, final reading, be enrolled and ordained. On the motion, please.
Yeah, this wording was worked out between Counselor Kushein and our city engineer. Turn it over to Counselor Kushein if he has anything he'd like to add. Thank you.
He's all set.
All dug, so all the thanks go to him.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflambeau, Roy Wagner, Zegorowski, Ariaga, Brooks.
Yes.
Goff, Valkir, Crapitz, Chomsky, Kushein, Labree. Twelve yes.
And a motion passes. And one extension, I'm sorry.
We have a favorable report from the ordinance committee to add to the following in schedule Nye Street Isolated Stop Sign.
Let's go with Counselor Crapitz.
Motion that the favorable ordinance committee report take its second and final reading and be enrolled and ordained tonight.
Motion that the ordinance committee report take its second and final reading and be enrolled and ordained. On the motion, please.
This was pretty straightforward for an isolated stop sign.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflambeau, Roy Wagner, Zegorowski, Ariaga, Brooks.
Yes.
Goff, Valkir, Crapitz, Chomsky, Kushein, Labree. Twelve yes, one abstention.
And a motion passes.
All right, we have a favorable report with a motion to withdraw from the zoning committee for special permit application under Chapter 275-67 and 62 for the purpose of mixed-use development, including 600 new residential units and up to 400,000 square feet of commercial space within the former Cabotville Mill complex under the city's Mill Conversion and Commercial Overlay District located at 165 Front Street.
Counselor Valkir.
Motion that the favorable zoning committee report be received and that the motion to withdraw on the special permit without prejudice be approved this evening.
Motion made in second that the favorable zoning committee report be received and approved this evening. On the motion, please.
On the motion, we had a letter that was submitted by the applicant and it was reviewing that they had a problem because they did not submit all the documentation by the O D R C Committee. So the sense was either we were going to deny it or that they were going to withdraw. So they did the right thing in that they withdrew because otherwise they would have had to wait two years before they could have gone and submitted another application. So our recommendation is that the motion to withdraw without prejudice by the applicant be the acceptable thing to do tonight.
Any other comments from the floor? Any comments on Zoom? No, we'll call a roll for the withdrawal. Roll call, please.
President Laflambeau, Roy Wagner, Zegorowski, Ariaga, Brooks.
Shane, you came on, but we didn't get your vote.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Goff, Valkir, Crapitz, Chomsky, Kushein, Labree. Twelve yes, one abstention.
And a motion passes.
We have a favorable report from the zoning committee for a special permit application under Chapter 275-50C2B for the purpose of an installation of an electronic sign on front lawn at Chicagee Public Library located at 449 Front Street with a waiver 25 feet to 18 feet.
Counselor Valkir.
Motion that the favorable zoning committee report be received, that the special permit application or waiver be approved this evening.
Motion made in second that the favorable zoning committee report be received and approved this evening. On the motion, please.
On the motion, Mr. President, this was a special permit application for the purpose of installation of electronic sign on the front lawn at Chicagee Public Library located down the street of 449 Front Street. And so we had some discussion there with Dave Rice and the consensus from the committee was to approve the installation of the electronic sign with an eight-second delay per city ordinance regarding electronic signage.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflambeau, Roy Wagner, Zegorowski, Ariaga, Brooks.
Yes.
Goff, Valkir, Crapitz, Chomsky, Kushein, Labree. Twelve yes, one abstention.
And a motion passes.
Mr. President, we also have to vote on a waiver. There was a waiver requested, a setback from 25 feet to 18 feet, and the recommendation is to grant the waiver.
Motion made in second that the approval of the waiver be approved this evening. On the motion, please.
On the motion, again, this is something the applicant requested. There was a setback issued from 25 to 18 feet in front of the Chicagee Public Library on Front Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflambeau, Roy Wagner, Zegorowski, Ariaga, Brooks.
Yes.
Goff, Valkir, Crapitz, Chomsky, Kushein, Labree. Twelve yes.
And a motion passes.
We have a favorable report from the zoning committee for zone change application from Business A to Central Business District CBD for 4,530 square feet of property located at Zero Chicagee Street for the purpose of removing a split zone parcel and to advance mixed-use development.
Counselor Valkir.
Motion that the zoning committee report be received and that the zone change be approved this evening.
Motion made in second that the favorable zoning committee report be received and approved this evening. On the motion, please.
On the motion, Mr. President, this was a zone change application from Business A to Central Business District for plus or minus 4,530 square feet of property located at Zero Chicagee Street, which is on the corner of Chicagee Street and Blanche Street. And this is for the purpose of removing a split zone parcel and to advance mixed-use development. So we had a zoning meeting and we had some interesting discussion regarding this particular proposal. We had a couple of people from the neighborhood talking about it, but we did approve the motion and that's our recommendation to approve the zone change this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflambeau, Roy Wagner, Zegorowski, Ariaga, Brooks.
Yes.
Goff, Valkir, Crapitz, Chomsky, Kushein, Labree. Twelve yes, one abstention.
And a motion passes.
We have a favorable report from the zoning committee for a special permit application under Chapter 275-30B for the purpose of storage container material storage located at Zero Chicagee Street.
Counselor Valkir.
Motion that the zoning committee report be received and that the special permit application be approved this evening with conditions.
Motion made in second that the favorable zoning committee report be received and approved this evening with restrictions. On the motion, please.
On the motion, Mr. President, thank you. This is also referring to the subject property that was referenced in the previous agenda item. Again, we had some interesting discussion with some of the neighbors. This is a parcel located at the corner of Chicagee Street and Blanche Street. And there were a couple of neighbors that had some concerns about this particular property, so we felt that it was prudent when we were discussing it to put some teeth into some of a couple of conditions. And so therefore, this is our proposal. The motion to approve the special permit application for storage container material located at Zero Chicagee Street with the condition that two trailers are to be removed and that the building be constructed within the next nine months from the date of approval. And this is also a permit to run with the applicant. So that was the best action with this particular property so that we could appease the neighbors and we could also inform the applicant that they had to clean up the parcel and get to work as soon as the approval started with this particular special permit application. Thank you.
Counselor Kushein.
I want to thank the zoning committee for, you know, they were originally going to make it a year and then Counselor Wagner was looking at six months, which was what we really wanted. So I appreciate the compromise at nine months. You know, there was a storage trailer illegally sitting there for 18 months and that's how long it took to get to this special permit and that's concerning. So hopefully this sends a message that, you know, we're going to follow the rules from here on out. They can always come back and reapply for another permit if they need more time. So it's not that there's so much under the gun to get it done in nine months because it may not be possible and I respect that, but I have to respect the neighbors who have to live with the mess while it's happening. So I appreciate the compromise with the zoning board doing it at nine months.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflambeau, Roy Wagner, Zegorowski, Ariaga, Brooks.
Yes.
Goff, Valkir, Crapitz, Chomsky, Kushein, Labree. Twelve yes, one abstention.
And a motion passes.
We have a favorable report from the zoning committee for a special permit application under Chapter 275-30B for the purpose of installation of four KONEX storage containers for additional storage at the company's fabrication facility. Two containers are 40 by 8 and two are 20 by 8 located at 85 Le May Street.
Counselor Valkir.
Motion that the zoning committee report be received and that the special permit application be approved this evening with restrictions.
Motion made in second that the favorable zoning committee report be received with the special application and approved this evening. On the motion, please.
This is an application for the installation of four KONEX storage containers for additional storage at the Notch Mechanical Constructors Fabrication Facility. And so we had, again, some discussion with this one and there were also concerns from building as to how long this was, these containers were going to be out. And also the fire department had some concerns about the placement. So again, we had discussion about this and as we referenced in the previous agenda item that we wanted to put some more condition here so that of one year for the special permit to run from the approval date and this is a permit to run with the applicant so that there's a timeframe here and they can't just put these out for whatever they want for a long, long time. So this way here, we have, I think, a better control by doing this. And again, we had some discussion about this, so I think that's what the consensus is on this one as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflambeau, Roy Wagner, Zegorowski, Ariaga, Brooks.
Yes.
Goff, Valkir, Crapitz, Chomsky, Kushein, Labree. Twelve yes, one abstention.
And a motion passes.
Okay. We have a favorable report from the zoning committee for a special permit application under Chapter 275-53CG for the purpose of creating one buildable lot with frontage reduced to 20 feet and 60 feet, Zero Chicagee Street.
Counselor Valkir.
Thanks, Mr. President. Motion that the zoning committee report be received and a special permit application be approved this evening.
Motion made in second that the favorable zoning committee report be received and a special permit application be approved this evening. On the motion, please.
On a motion, this was a special permit application for the purpose of creating one buildable lot with frontage reduced to 20 feet and 60 feet, Zero Chicagee Street, although the solace should be taken consideration. Chomsky.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Twelve yes, one abstention.
And the motion passes.
We have a favorable report from the zoning committee for a special permit application under Chapter 275-9L3 for the purpose of renewing the existing special permit for a proposed multifamily with waiver of parking requirements from 88 to 75 at Zero Oak Street Development located at Zero Oak Street. Culpeper Properties.
Constable Ballack here.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. Motion that the zoning committee report be received and a special permit application be approved this evening with conditions.
Motion made in second that the favorable zoning committee report be received and a special application be approved this evening with restrictions. On the motion, please.
On the motion, this was a special permit application for the purpose of renewing the existing special permit for a proposed multifamily with a waiver of parking requirements from 88 to 75 spaces at Zero Oak Street. So, this previously had been approved, but I think because of the COVID situation and also some economics, the potential developer waited for some more favorable financial terms. So, they came before us. And again, this is at Zero Oak Street and we had some discussion with this. So, basically, the consensus was to approve for the purpose of renewing the existing special permit for proposed multifamily at Zero Oak Street with the condition that the applicant must comply with all requests and conditions of the overlay district review committee regarding the subject property. And this is a permit to run with the land on this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zagorowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Valkir.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Chomsky.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Twelve yes, one abstention.
And the motion passes.
We have a favorable report from the zoning committee for a special permit application under Chapter 275-9L3 for the purpose of redevelopment of a portion of the property. Waiver requested. Reduction in parking, 105 versus 95. Building height, 52 feet 9 inches versus 40 feet. Building permit, construction fees and EV spaces, 5 versus 3. Location, Zero Main Street.
Constable Ballack here.
Yeah, excuse me, Mr. President. I'm wondering if we can amend this because in talking with Planning Department, apparently we can only vote regarding the waiver of just reduction of parking. So, the other information that's here regarding the building height, building permits, construction fees and EV spaces, I believe that we don't have that, we don't have that power to do that. So, I'm not sure if we have to totally make a new reading for this amendment or if we just scratch it out. I'm not sure.
Attorney. On item number 27, can we just read the part that we want to approve tonight? You can read the section, the only part you want and don't even-
Make a motion to amend-
Amend it.
The order. We'll strike what you want us to strike.
Correct.
And then we'll vote on the amended order.
Correct.
Yep.
Okay.
So, make a motion to strike what you want to strike.
Yes, okay, thank you for the clarification. So, I like, excuse me, make a motion to amend and strike some information regarding to item number 27. The items I'd like to strike, again, this was reference that we don't have the jurisdiction. The building height, 52 feet 9 inches versus 40. Building permit, construction fees and EV spaces, 5 versus 3, Mr. President. If we could strike that, please.
Just one second. The clerk is rechecking, redoing it. Okay. Motion made in second that the favorable, to strike, building height, 52.9 inches versus 40 feet, building permit and construction fees and EV space, 5 versus 3, be removed.
That sounds good.
Roll call, please.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zagorowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Valkir.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Chomsky.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Twelve yes, one abstention.
And the motion passes.
We have a favorable report from the zoning committee for a special permit application under Chapter 275-67 for a purpose of redevelopment of a portion of the property. Waiver requested. Reduction in parking, 105 versus 95. Building height, 52 feet 9 inches versus 40 feet. Building permit, construction fees and EV spaces, 5 versus 3. Location, Zero Main Street.
Constable Ballack here.
Yeah, excuse me, Mr. President. I'm wondering if we can amend this because in talking with Planning Department, apparently we can only vote regarding the waiver of just reduction of parking. So, the other information that's here regarding the building height, building permit, construction fees and EV spaces, I believe that we don't have that, we don't have that power to do that. So, I'm not sure if we have to totally make a new reading for this amendment or if we just scratch it out. I'm not sure.
Attorney. On item number 27, can we just read the part that we want to approve tonight?
Hmm.
You can read the section, the only part you want and don't even-
Make a motion to amend-
Amend it.
The order. We'll strike what you want us to strike.
Correct.
And then we'll vote on the amended order.
Correct.
Yep.
Okay.
So, make a motion to strike what you want to strike.
Yes, okay, thank you for the clarification. So, I like, excuse me, make a motion to amend and strike some information regarding to item number 27. The items I'd like to strike, again, this was reference that we don't have the jurisdiction. The building height, 52 feet 9 inches versus 40. Building permit, construction fees and EV spaces, 5 versus 3, Mr. President. If we could strike that, please.
Just one second. The clerk is rechecking, redoing it. Okay. Motion made in second that the favorable, to strike, building height, 52.9 inches versus 40 feet, building permit and construction fees and EV space, 5 versus 3, be removed.
That sounds good.
Roll call, please.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zagorowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Valkir.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Chomsky.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Twelve yes, one abstention.
And the motion passes.
Okay. All right, amended order, okay. So, this is a motion that the zoning permit report be reviewed and a special permit application be approved this evening with restrictions.
Yes. Motion made in second that the favorable zoning committee report be received and approves- What did you, as amended?
As amended with-
With restrictions.
With restrictions.
Okay.
All right, okay.
On the motion, please.
Yeah, on the motion, yeah, thank you. Yeah, this was, this was an interesting one. This is regarding the proposal for 61 units at the location of Zero Main Street, which is in the area behind the Old Falls Pizza by the Singing Bridge. And so, they want to build 61 units here. And we had, we had some interesting discussion with this. So, I think I'll just, I'll just get to the main part of what I want to mention here. So, we went back and forth. And so, finally, we came to a consensus, working with the developers, working with planning, working in conjunction with the overlay district review committee report. There are a lot of moving pieces here. So, this is the general consensus we came up to. Granting a conditional approval of the project with the following conditions. Applicant must comply with all requests and conditions of the overlay district review committee regarding the site plan. And also, there was a satisfactory response letter from the planning director that all conditions have been met regarding the O D R C review. We had issues from several departments about this. So, we did make some concessions in that we gave a conditional approval. So, we had issues with planning. Engineering had concerns with the traffic study. They wanted a study that was at least a week. They had concerns about the hours, peak hours. There was also from the fire, traffic study, water department. So, the developer, they're working with the state and with the federal government and they had some deadlines that they were trying to meet. So, and they were looking at tax credits as well. So, again, we spent some time on this one with the presentation and working with that particular team. So, that was the consensus, conditional approval with the conditions that I referenced.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Comments from Zooms? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zagorowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Valkir.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Chomsky.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Twelve yes, one abstention.
And the motion passes.
And, Mr. President, we also have a waiver requested as we referenced in the restructuring of the agenda, a reduction in parking, 105 versus 95.
Motion's made in second that the waiver for item number 27 be approved this evening with restrictions. On the motion.
Thank you. There was a waiver requested for reduction parking, 105 versus 95. So, taking a look at the site plan, that's, that was recommended. So, we're in favor of granting that waiver for parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zagorowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Valkir.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Chomsky.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Twelve yes, one abstention.
And the motion passes.
And, Mr. President, we also have a waiver requested as we referenced in the restructuring of the agenda, a reduction in parking, 105 versus 95.
Motion's made in second that the waiver for item number 27 be approved this evening with restrictions. On the motion.
Thank you. There was a waiver requested for reduction parking, 105 versus 95. So, taking a look at the site plan, that's, that was recommended. So, we're in favor of granting that waiver for parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zagorowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Valkir.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Chomsky.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Twelve yes, one abstention.
And the motion passes.
We have a favorable report from the zoning committee for a special permit application under Chapter 275-9L3 for the purpose of developing an existing property for residential and commercial use. Project shall include the addition of 10 new apartments on the second level of an existing structure. Waiver requested traffic impact study.
Constable Ballack here.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion that the zoning committee report be received and that the special permit application be tabled until the November 14 zoning committee meeting at 274 Front Street, Third Floor Auditorium, 6:30 PM meeting.
Okay, I didn't get the date, November 14th, just to make sure.
Uh, yes, yes.
Motion made in second that the favorable zoning committee report be received and a special permit application tabled until November 14th, 2024, at the City Hall and the chambers and the third, fourth floor at 274 Front Street. On the motion, please.
Yeah, excuse me, Mr. President, we'll have to have that here at the third floor of the auditorium.
Okay, it was the auditorium.
And the resolution was to put this off until the 14th, November 14th meeting. So, that was the recommendation. So, that's our proposal at this point in time, and hopefully, we will resolve this and start some more new housing. But we have to make sure everything matches each other. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Any comments from Zooms? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zegarowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Duff.
Yes.
Falkir.
Yes.
Crapitz. Chomsky.
Yes.
Kuchain.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Eleven yes, one out of chair, one abstention.
And a motion passes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Excuse me. There was also the waiver requested.
Ready for it, yeah.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to make sure. So, there was a waiver requested for a traffic impact study. And again, because of the dilemma that we had of not having the documentation mirror each other, the consensus through the help of legal was to also table this particular waiver until the November 14th zoning committee meeting at 74 Front Street Auditorium as well.
Motion made in second to table the item number, what number is it on?
The waiver.
The waiver.
To November 14th.
To November 14th.
Yes, here in the auditorium.
Okay.
Yes.
On the motion, please.
Yeah, so on the motion, again, Mr. President, that was the consensus between legal and our committees. So, that was the prudent thing to do. So, hopefully, this will get cleaned up on the 14th. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zegarowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Duff.
Yes.
Falkir.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Chomsky.
Yes.
Kuchain.
Yes.
Labrie. Eleven yes, one out of chair, one abstention.
And a motion passes.
Be it ordered that the city council open nominations for appointments of seven members selected by the city council for the City Hall Phase Two Building Commission. Nominations are due in the city council office for consideration at the November 19th meeting. The following nominations submitted for consideration, William Boone, Linda Marook, Maureen Care, Stephen Morno, Michael Lempert, and Tom Costello are received and forwarded to the November 19th meeting, Article 11, Section 1644.
Counselor Zegarowski.
A motion that the order take its first reading and refer to the Rules Committee for a public hearing.
Well, yeah, we got to open them first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. I'd like to open up nominations for this committee.
Motion made in second that we open up nominations for the Phase Two of the City Hall Auditor, City Hall. Motion, please.
Yeah.
Roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zegarowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Duff. Falkir.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Chomsky.
Yes.
Kuchain.
Yes.
Labrie. Eleven yes, one out of chair, one abstention.
And a motion passes.
I make a motion that we appoint everybody that's on this list. Nominate anybody that's on this list right now.
Motion made in second that we.
Close nominations.
Put the following names to be nominated on the November 19th meeting. On the motion, please.
On the motion, this is something that we have to put together to the building commission. And is there anybody else on the floor for nominations? Do we have to?
You have to.
Yeah, we'll leave them open.
We have to leave them open.
We have to motion to nominate them, which we did.
Which we did. Now, we can just do them.
All right. Anybody else on the floor want to make a nomination? Anybody on Zoom? Zoom again? Roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zegarowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Duff.
Yes.
Falkir.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Chomsky.
Yes.
Kuchain.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
And the motion passes.
Twelve yes, one abstention.
And a motion passes.
Okay. Be it ordered that the rules and orders of the city council meeting shall be amended as follows. Delete 11E. All orders, ordinances, resolutions, petitions, communications, or late-file orders must be day and time stamped by the city clerk on the day of submission. This rule does not apply as late files to committee reports and in certain place thereof. 11E, all orders, ordinances, resolutions, petitions, communications must be day and time stamped by the city clerk on the day of submission.
Counselor Zegarowski.
A motion that the order take its first reading and submit it for a public hearing.
It has to go to rules.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have to move.
Send to rules.
Send to Rules Committee first.
Motion made in second that the order be received and sent to the Rules Committee for a public hearing. On the motion, please.
On the motion, this is something that our President, Counselor Laflambeau filed, and I'd like to have him speak on it if he wishes.
It's just to correct it. We don't use that no more. So, we're going to, we have to close it out.
Okay.
That's why we're deleting it. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Any comments from Zooms? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zegarowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Duff.
Yes.
Falkir.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Chomsky.
Yes.
Kuchain.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Twelve yes, one abstention. Motion passes.
And a motion passes.
Be it ordered that the Public Safety Committee meet with the police chief and the fire chief to discuss the process regarding false alarms with the fire department and police department.
Counselor Zegarowski.
A motion that the order be received, take its first reading, and sent to, for a public hearing.
Motion made in second that the order be received and sent to the Public Safety for a public hearing. On the motion, please.
On the motion, this is an order filed by Councilman President Laflambeau, and this will be forwarded to our Public Safety Committee. On the motion.
On the motion, just so everybody knows, this is just a police chief and fire chief wants to get together and discuss the false alarms that are coming in rapidly for same companies that are out there. And we may want to think about going so far with so many of them and then find, to get them to fix their equipment, that when we send out the fire department, they're sending out fire trucks. When they send out cruisers, sometimes they're sending two cruisers. And the resources could be used somewhere else. So, they ask to come in to talk to us. And that's what it is. Thank you. Any other comments?
Any other comments on the floor?
Counselor Kuchain.
I believe there already is an ordinance or rules within the departments that after so many, you get fined for those.
Yeah, but he wants to talk about, he knows about that.
Right. Yeah. It's already on the books.
It was their request. Any other comments from the floor?
Zoom.
Any comments from Zooms? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zegarowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Duff.
Yes.
Falkir.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Chomsky.
Yes.
Kuchain.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Twelve yes, one abstention.
And a motion passes.
Be it ordered that the Disability Commission perform a complete audit for ADA compliance. This includes compliance for city services, city programs, and city buildings.
Counselor Costello.
Yes, I would ask that this order also be referred to the Disability Commission for a public hearing. I would like to amend that order to refer to the Disability Commission for a public hearing in regards to performing a complete audit for ADA compliance. This includes for the city services, city programs, and city buildings. Has it been? Is that okay?
I don't think we can, we have to have a committee to send it, our committee. We don't have a disability committee.
Okay.
You have to send it, you can send it to Public Safety, wherever you want to send, but you got to send to one of our committees.
Okay.
And have them present if you want.
Then if I.
Am I correct? Yes, okay.
Okay. If I can, I could amend it to send it to Public Safety in regards to disability compliance in regards to the city.
And have them present.
The reason why I'm asking that is that there has been concerns raised by residents, including one that was here earlier, in regards to compliance with disability issues.
Okay, so, motion made in second that we send this item to Public Safety for a public hearing and request that the Disability Commission be the president. Okay. On the motion. You just said it, okay. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Any comments from Zoom? Roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zegarowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Duff.
Yes.
Falkir.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Chomsky.
Yes.
Kuchain.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Twelve yes, one abstention.
And a motion passes.
Be it ordered that the city's obligation in regard to paper streets, that the public health issues or safety issues that affect city residents be discussed by the zoning committee.
Yeah, motion that the order be received and referred to zoning committee for a public hearing.
I'm not sure this belongs in zoning either.
I know that I discussed this at some point. I'm sorry.
I don't, it's a safety issue. It's not a zoning issue. It's not a, it has to go to Public Safety. It's not a zoning. It has nothing to do with chapter 275.
Okay.
You can, I can try, but I think you'd be better off. Or Public Works, either one of those two.
We could do Public Works.
Motion made in second that the item be received and sent to the Public Works for a public hearing. On the motion, please.
Yes, I would like Lisa Sanders of the Public Health Department to also be invited to the meeting to discuss health issues as well as safety issues in regards to the city's obligation to address paper streets.
Okay, thank you. If I could, it could, Counselor Kuchain first and then I would like to make a comment.
Just a question through the chair to the counsel. Did you speak to the planning department about this at all?
I didn't speak to the planning department.
Because I have, I'm working on a paper street for many years now as we try to release it to another butter, but these are all on private property. I have four butters that own a paper street. Basically, they don't know it, or they may know it, but, so it's not public property, it's private property. So, I don't know. I mean, we probably have some streets on public property, but that's why I was wondering if you talked to planning about this first.
Mr. President, I can, I can.
Hold on, hold on a minute. If I can finish first. Are you all set?
Yes.
Okay.
I just want to confirm what Counselor Kuchain said. Paper streets are not city property.
Right.
So, there's no response, if I may respond to the statement. So, basically, there are no, there's no responsibility by the city if a paper street is in an area that could be creating a problem with either safety or, either safety or public health. Who maintains that, then? Whose responsibility legally is a paper street if there's a problem with public health and safety?
Okay, if I, if I can interject for once.
Yeah, go ahead.
With the approval of the council, may I speak for a minute?
Motion to allow the president to speak on this item.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
President Laflambeau. Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yeah.
Zegarowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yep.
Duff.
Yes.
Falkir.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Chomsky.
Yes.
Kuchain.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Twelve yes, one abstention.
Thank you. I would like you to send this to DPW. This belongs to DPW. I had a discussion, I think, with you and others. She has a clear vision, idea of what we're all talking about already. She did a lot of homework. And she's responsible for those streets, not the health department. They're there for that part of it. But let's get the answers on the street part first, who's responsible, before we call in the health department.
Okay.
You know, because I think, I get where you're coming from, Counselor Costello, and what everyone else is. But I think we send, get them in first. Send it there, but have DPW come, because Lisa's going to only refer you to whatever Liz gives you for who owns that property as the area. Because we, I had this discussion with, for several people about paper streets and dead-end streets, who's responsible, cul-de-sacs, those are all on there. You know, islands, we spent, we talked about, Counselor Costello, those things. So, let's get Lisa in here to explain it and do a thorough thing for us. And I just hope you would allow her to come instead of Lisa, because Lisa's going to say, well, I don't know if, who owns it at that point. Then, we could have her come in, or you can have her too. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, Counselor Balakir was next.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. No, I was looking for further clarification on this as well. I think Counselor Kuchain has a good idea with planning, also legal, to get their input, and I think DPW as well. So, I think we need to get more information before we can actually come and make a good decision on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're going to hear from our attorney.
So, I got a little bit of experience with paper streets over the years. Paper streets are a right to use. So, the city reserves, if the city records a plan at the registry, and it's what we call a paper street, meaning it's not paved, it's not turned into a street, it's a right to turn it into a street at some point if the city decides to appropriate the money and create a street. If the city does not do that, a paper street is not owned by the city. It's just a right to create a street in the future. So, a lot of times, it's between streets. It's a cut through. So, the people that own a paper street are the butters. As Counselor Kuchain said, it's, you own to the middle of the paper street if you're in a butter.
Okay, so, we'll take this up in committee. We can keep going around the board here, but I'll let Counselor Crapitz have his hand, and then we're going to vote on it. Counselor Crapitz.
Just a couple of things through the president to Counselor Costello. Just so, toward this meeting preparation, what kind of issues are you looking to have discussed, just so we kind of have an idea of what the framework's going to be for the meeting?
Well, the, one issue that I do have is, there is a resident that lives next door to a paper street, and there's a lot of overgrowth there. And it attracts rodents, and that can enter their property. So, who's responsible for the overgrowth and the rodents? Is it the neighbor, up to 50% of the land? And that's why I wanted to have a hearing in a subcommittee, so we could really look at this, to see, because I don't think it's fair that the resident has to pay for a paper street for a public health issue. street for a public health issue. I just don't think that's fair, and I just would like some conversation on that to see if the city can help residents that have a paper street problem. I want to recognize Counsel Zigorowski, about a year ago, we worked on a paper street, and it was really difficult. We just had to accept what we could go with at the time, but I'm just trying to address a concern that is a safety issue and a public health issue in regards to the resident and all residents.
Okay, so we're going to, you have any more? We're going to move this question on.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, I'm not done yet.
All right, we're going to send this to committee. So let's just ask what we need to do to send this to committee. We're debating this on the floor tonight, and we should just send it to what the committee needs to go to.
Okay, the only additional comment I was going to make is we do have a process for abandoning paper streets to the abutters. I mean, I think that's something we can discuss in the committee itself.
That's what Liz will discuss. This has been talked about several times.
All right, thank you.
Counsel Kushein was the last one, and half a minute.
Yeah, just so if you look up on GIS, you can find out who owns that part of the property that's overgrown, and that person can be sent a letter to correct. It's simple as that. Everybody owns a paper street or a part of it. Using GIS will give you the property boundaries, it'll give you the property owner, and then a letter to correct can be sent out. It's just that simple.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Roll call, please. Okay, we're going to take a roll call on sending it. Roll call.
Just to clarify your motion, where's this going?
I'm sorry?
Public safety.
Yeah, to public safety, thank you.
Public Works or Public Safety?
Excuse me, Public Works.
Right, Public Works.
Yeah, we'll do Public, thank you.
Public Works. Roll call, please.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zigorowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Hough.
Yes.
Falkeer.
Yes.
Krampitz.
Yes.
Chomsky.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
12 yes, one abstention.
And a motion passes.
Be it ordered that this, okay, we, be it ordered that the Public Safety Committee meet to discuss the obstructed view on the corner of Britton Street and Royal Street.
Counsel Costello.
Yes, motion to receive the order and refer to public safety.
Motion made in second, the order be received and sent to the Public Safety Committee for a public hearing on the motion.
Yes, this is in regards to the road safety that Counsel Ariaga referred to earlier this evening. There's an obstructed view on this particular corner. It's been like that for quite some time. There is concern about road safety, and Britton Street is a very heavily traveled street, so it would be good to have a discussion.
Okay.
In regards to what can, and I would ask that the building department be at the meeting.
I would also put the DPW. They're responsible for sidewalks and views.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none, Bob.
To Counsel Costello, what is the obstruction there? I noticed.
There's a fence, there's a large fence, and there's a large, like shrub there. So when you go to the corner, and you're trying to get off of one street onto a heavily traveled street, there's an obstruction there. And I don't know if the city can do something to address that obstruction. It's been a concern of many constituents in that area for quite some time.
We'll take it up in committee.
Through the chair, Mr. President, I believe we have an order, and it's already on the books about obstructing corners.
Yes, yes, we do, and there's also setbacks by 25 feet of view from any street or corner. So we'll take it up in committee if we could, please. I just think that we should notify the.
Building.
It's the building in DPW that controls the streets and the views.
They should be notified.
Well, they will be. They're on it. She asked for that.
All right.
Thank you, Counsel Zigorowski.
In your chair, so you could invite whoever you want.
Is it going to DPW or Public Safety now?
That one's going to Public Safety.
Safe type of property.
We're going to send it to Public Safety, and we'll clear it up there, please. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zigorowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Hough.
Yes.
Falkeer.
Yes.
Krampitz.
Yes.
Chomsky.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Well, yes, one abstention.
And a motion passes.
Be it ordered that the Human Resource Committee meet to discuss the position of certified ADA compliance officer for the city of.
Counsel Costello.
Order that the order be received and referred to the Human Resource Committee to discuss the position of a certified ADA compliance officer.
Motion made second, the order be received and sent to the Human Resource Committee for a public hearing on the motion, please.
As we had heard earlier from a resident, that there is concern by many people in regards to ADA compliance. And it's always good to have a certified ADA compliance officer as part of our team to make sure that disability issues are being addressed, and we don't put the city at risk for any type of liability for noncompliance. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Counsel Labrie.
Yeah, is that the right committee to send it to? I mean, we don't have any power over that.
Yeah.
The reason, Counsel Labrie, I said to Human Resources is I believe that a Human Resource Officer is the ADA compliance officer. So I just want to make sure that whoever does the disability assessments is certified as an ADA compliance officer.
So.
That's what I'm looking for.
It needs to go to Human, it is under the HR.
Right.
You all say?
Okay.
Yeah, but let's send it there because, yeah, let's send it to there. You'll discuss it, and I think we'll reach out to the mayor about that as part of that HR review, if we may. I'm sorry. All right, are we done on the floor? Any comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zigorowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Hough.
Yes.
Falkeer.
Yes.
Krampitz.
Yes.
Chomsky.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
12 yes, one abstention.
And a motion passes.
Be it ordered that the Public Works Committee meet to discuss the status of signage on James Street from 820 Memorial Drive to the intersection of Johnson Road.
Counsel Costello.
Yes, order that the order be received and referred to the Public Works Committee for further discussion in regards to signage.
Motion made in second, the Public Works, motion that the order be received and sent to the Public Works Committee for a public hearing on the motion, please.
Yes, some residents have been concerned in regards to this particular area on James Street that goes from 820 Memorial Drive right to the intersection of James Street and Johnson Road. The traffic has increased, there's a new business there coming on, I believe, at the Castle of the Knights, and people are concerned in regards to any signage that should be addressed, to address the increase of traffic in regards to that area. Thank you.
Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Any comments from Zoom? Roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zigorowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Hough.
Yes.
Falkeer.
Yes.
Krampitz.
Yes.
Chomsky.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
12 yes, one abstention.
And a motion passes.
Be it ordered that the Public Works Committee meet to discuss the status of signage on James Street from 820 Memorial Drive to the intersection of Johnson Road.
Counsel Costello.
Yes, order that the order be received and referred to the Public Works Committee for further discussion in regards to signage.
Motion made in second, the Public Works, motion that the order be received and sent to the Public Works Committee for a public hearing on the motion, please.
Yes, some residents have been concerned in regards to this particular area on James Street that goes from 820 Memorial Drive right to the intersection of James Street and Johnson Road. The traffic has increased, there's a new business there coming on, I believe, at the Castle of the Knights, and people are concerned in regards to any signage that should be addressed, to address the increase of traffic in regards to that area. Thank you.
Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zigorowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Hough.
Yes.
Falkeer.
Yes.
Krampitz.
Yes.
Chomsky.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
12 yes, one abstention.
And a motion passes.
Be it ordered that Rule 15 of the Rules of the City Council be amended to read as follows. Standing committees shall be appointed as follows. Claims and accounts, finance and budget, rules and ordinances, public works and resources, zoning and licenses, human resources, public health and safety, government relations and municipal operations, community and economic development. All committees shall have five members unless otherwise specified. There shall be a committee of the whole consisting of all members of the city council. No items shall be referred to the committee of the whole except by two-thirds majority vote.
Counsel Wagner.
Motion that the order be received and referred to the Rules Committee for a public hearing. Motion made in second, that the order be received and sent to the Rules Committee for a public hearing. On the motion, please. On the motion, this is something that I discussed with President Laflambeau, and which he's been working on with other councillors, including Vice President Zigorowski. Obviously, I think, as all of us know, I think we have close to 17 committees on the city council. There was discussion about removing or combining some of those so that some of them meet more frequently, and so that we get rid of some that don't. And then there was a, so I looked at the committees of 18 out of the 53 city forms of government and the Commonwealth, and came up with a list that I expect the committee, the Rules Committee, will tailor to their liking. So some of you might see a couple of these and wonder, well, what the heck are these? And then, so the government municipal operations, I put in there because some of these city councils have a sort of catch-all committee to send stuff that doesn't exactly fit in any other committee if the need arises. So I expect that the Rules Committee will have its input, and I wait their recommendation.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from, oh, Counsel Roy.
I'm not sure if I understand this, Counsel. So what you're saying is that the zoning and license committee are going to meet at the same time at the same destination?
Counsel Wagner, you can.
So respectfully, yeah. So what a lot of city councils do, and again, the Rules Committee can amend it as need be, so I don't, you know, feel like there should be too much discussion on this, as we've had with some items. But the license committee doesn't tend to meet a whole heck of a lot in Chicopee, once every few months, maybe. It tends to meet less frequently in other communities, from my research, and they typically have, some committees, some communities have a zoning license put into one singular committee just because they're a sort of similar topic. But again, I expect that the Rules Committee will make its recommendation whether they want to, you know, keep them separate or not. I just put out something based on research that I've seen in other communities.
So right now, you're just asking to send it to Rules?
That would be correct. That's what the motion on the floor is.
All right, thank you. Thank you. And if I, oh, Counsel Costello.
Yeah, not to belabor points or anything here, but this is a great initiative because we've got to review all those committees. A lot of them don't meet that often, and this is a step forward to modernize our council so that we become more effective in subcommittees. Thank you, Counselor Laflambeau and Counsel Wagner.
If I may, I'd like to talk a minute.
Motion to allow the President to speak.
Motion made second to allow the President to speak. Roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zigorowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Hough.
Yes.
Falkeer.
Yes.
Krampitz.
Yes.
Chomsky.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
11 yes, two abstentions.
Just real quick, I want to thank Counsel Wagner for, what happened here is, it was, we had talked about this as Counsel Wagner, so the Vice President and myself had come up with a lot of them, and Counsel Wagner asked me, hey, can we look around? And I said, hey, do us a little bit of homework for us. And he went out there and did this for us, to have something to review, some ideas of what's in the community. So this here is going to be sent to Rules, and as will adjust it to what we feel, and then it gets voted on by all 13 members, excuse me. So I just want to thank him for bringing it forward now, and it gives us something to work with. Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Any comments from Zoom? Roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zigorowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Hough.
Yes.
Falkeer.
Yes.
Krampitz.
Yes.
Chomsky.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
11 yes, two abstentions.
Just real quick, I want to thank Counsel Wagner for, what happened here is, it was, we had talked about this as Counsel Wagner, so the Vice President and myself had come up with a lot of them, and Counsel Wagner asked me, hey, can we look around? And I said, hey, do us a little bit of homework for us. And he went out there and did this for us, to have something to review, some ideas of what's in the community. So this here is going to be sent to Rules, and as will adjust it to what we feel, and then it gets voted on by all 13 members, excuse me. So I just want to thank him for bringing it forward now, and it gives us something to work with. Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Any comments from Zoom? Roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zigorowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Hough.
Yes.
Falkeer.
Yes.
Krampitz.
Yes.
Chomsky.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
11 yes, one abstention.
And a motion passes.
Be it ordered that the rules and orders of the city council meetings shall be amended as follows. Delete 12D. The President shall open meetings to public input. Public input should be limited to three minutes. No person shall be allowed to yield to another during public input. The individual shall give their name and address prior to speaking. At any time, a person not present at the close of public input makes a request to address the city council, he or she will require two-thirds majority vote of the council before being allowed to proceed. And insert in place thereof 12D. The President shall open the meeting to public input. Public input shall be limited to three minutes. No person shall be allowed to yield time to another during public input. The individual shall give their name and address prior to speaking. At any time, a person is not present at the close of public input makes a request to address the city council, he or she will require two-thirds majority, roll call, vote of this council before being allowed to proceed. No person shall speak during public input who is not a resident of the city of Chicopee or who does not have business pending before the committee such as, but not limited to, license and zoning applications.
Counsel Wagner.
Motion that the order be received and referred to the Rules Committee for a public hearing.
Motion made second, the order be received and sent to the Rules Committee for a public hearing. On the motion, please.
On the motion, as we all know, prior to the election, we had a few individuals all from the town of West Springfield come and speak before us and do some work to discredit the hard work of our election officials, including our own city clerk, Keith Rattell, as regards to the accuracy of the elections and the voter rules and all of that. And I thought it made me do a little bit of thinking, and perhaps it's doing a little bit of a disservice to residents of the city of Chicopee that residents from other communities can just come in and speak on whatever and, you know, do what they did. So I think that it's important that the city council that handles city of Chicopee issues should only hear from city of Chicopee residents and the people that have business before it. And, Mr. President, before I conclude, I'd like to say that if this does go to the Rules Committee, I'd like to, if I could, make a suggestion for amendment, because I forgot a couple of groups of people in here. First of all, our city employees and our school department employees. Obviously, you know, they might not have particular business pending before the city. However, they are an integral part of our city operations, whether they're our educators, whether they're our maintenance people or whatever. So a motion to, or an amendment in the committee to include them, and then an amendment to include our elected officials as well, many of whom from the Chicopee delegation don't live in Chicopee. We have six state lawmakers representing parts of the city, five of whom do not live in the city. So I think if they ever wanted to speak, I think it would be important to hear from them as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counsel Balakir, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. Yeah, I want to thank Counsel Wagner for bringing up that reference about people speaking, excuse me, people speaking during public input were not residents of the city of Chicopee. In particular, the group was United Sovereign Americans from Massachusetts, and I did take umbrage to that, and I did speak during public input referencing that. So I'm in favor of this, and I think that people that are either from the city of Chicopee or who have business pending before the committee, I'm in favor of that. But other people, I don't think we should be having people with other ideas about public policy or so on, from other cities or towns, should not be coming in and telling us about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Chomsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also just want to make a friendly amendment to what Counsel Wagner suggested. Maybe we should include office staff of a state delegation, because all the state delegator may not be here, one of his office staff might be, and they may not live in the city as well.
Through the chair to Counsel Chomsky, I think that that would be an appropriate amendment for committee. I would just prefer that those things be handled in there, if that's.
Okay.
Okay, so if you guys could, we're going to do the amendments in committee, so just send them to me, to Counsel's office, please, and then we'll do, we'll take care of that. We don't have time to do that tonight, to write them all down and take care of it. So if you could, any amendments or suggestions, just send them. I'm going to ask our attorney just to talk for a couple of minutes. Do you want to talk on this about the First Amendment and that?
Okay, so on, I had a chance to review Counsel Wagner's proposal, and from a legal perspective, you cannot limit public input to people only from the city of Chicopee. That's state law. That's a, there's a Supreme Court case, SJC case on that. You cannot limit it. So if you're in a, if you're, there's a difference between public input and public
and this, among other things, will be the subject, the broad subject of an executive session for a special city council meeting that we have coming up on November 13th. And I've been told that if I have any questions, that would not be covered under the executive session, that I can refile the order and see where things go.
Motion made in second. Did the order be received and withdrawn this evening? On the motion, please. You just gave it. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none. Roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zagrowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Valkier.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Shamsky.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labree.
Yes.
Twelve yes, one abstention.
The motion passes.
Be it ordered that the DPW Engineering Planning conduct a comprehensive review of traffic and speeding on the following streets: Dale Street, Rolfe Avenue, Montgomery Street, Kendall Street.
Council Wagner.
Motion that the order be received and referred to the DPW Engineering Department and Planning Department for implementation.
Motion made in second. The order be received and sent to the DPW in Engineering and Planning for approval. On the motion.
On the motion. This is something that I've discussed at length with residents, with Councilor Labree, with Councilor Ariaga regarding the number of accidents that have happened on Dale Street and the surrounding, and the surrounding streets. I live right off of Dale Street, so whenever, whenever these accidents happen, I hear them. Whenever I have my window open, I hear them. And it's, and it's been a particular concern of residents. And I'd like to salute Councilor Ariaga for her efforts in getting the solar speed radars up there, which are an important first step. But I think it's important that we have a broader discussion and a study done on this, on this street and the surrounding streets, see what we can do to improve traffic safety, not too dissimilar from what Councilor Shamsky hopes to do with the Burnett Road corridor. I'm, quite frankly, I'm a little bit exhausted with being told what we can't do in regards to this. And I'd like to have DPW Engineering and Planning tell us what exactly we can do and then implement that. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Would you want to also send it to the Police Department? Have someone in the Police Department would be good.
That's absolutely fine. We can send it to the Police Department as well. Thank you.
They're the officers who do everything.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Roll call, please.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zagrowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Valkier.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Shamsky.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labree.
Yes.
Twelve yes, one abstention.
The motion passes.
Be it ordered that the City Council respectfully request that a police officer be on patrol on the following streets on a 24/7 basis: Dale Street, Chickaby Street, Meadow Street, McKenstry Avenue, the stretch between Grattan Street and Granby Road.
Council Wagner.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to withdraw this order.
Motion made in second that this order be withdrawn. On the motion, please.
On the motion, Mr. President. I spoke with the police chief this evening. As many of you know, we always try to go to the department as beforehand. I, however, unfortunately work in help desk in IT, which means that I am on the phone helping my clients all day, every day, four, eight hours, helping them with their technical issues, putting in tickets. So I wasn't exactly able to contact them on this. But in my discussion with the chief this evening, he assured me that on the aforementioned streets, he would make an appointment to have an increased police presence, just because these are streets that have had much higher rates of traffic accidents and fatalities. And so for that, I'd like to thank Chief Major.
Thank you. I'd like to speak on this for one quick second. Roll call, please.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zagrowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Valkier.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Shamsky.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labree. Eleven yes, two abstentions.
Yeah, I just, I just want to, I did also meet with the chiefs regarding this issue. If you look at, we just voted on Mayor's Order 7. In talking with the chief today, myself, and talking to Council Wagner, that money where you see traffic enforcement and pedestrians will be, some of that money is going to be earmarked for that area. So as part of it, because there's other areas too. But part of this will help him be able to try to increase down that. I did ask the chief to also, when available, to have the safe car, whatever it is, to go. If they're not available, to try to get that to go down that area. Work with Glenn Joslin, who runs that vehicle for the city at the schools, maybe a couple hours on those streets too. So I want to thank Council Wagner for bringing it forward so that we can at least work on it and the chief for looking at it right away, as we do for all parts of the city. Thank you. Oh, Concha Shamsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also wanted to address this. I actually just had a conversation with Chief Major today, and I don't know for information purposes for the rest of the council. I've always been able and been very respectful to the chief. And when I ask a question like, can I have more patrols up in my area, they are always willing and able to do that. So that's information for all of us if we ever need it, certain parts of the city. Like I just had him go through the neighborhoods up off of Burnett Road because we've had a lot of speeding issues with the school and, you know, people leaving in and out of their homes. So we're just trying to help keep people safe. So that's definitely food for thought for those who didn't know that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none. Roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zagrowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Valkier.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Shamsky.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labree.
Yes.
Twelve yes, one abstention.
The motion passes.
We have an application for a new special permit under Section 275-58(c)(7) of the Municipal Zoning Ordinance for the purpose of operating a towing and storage business at 78 West Street. Cruise control transportation.
Let's see, there's a special permit. Concha Balakir.
Well, thanks, Mr. President. Motion made to receive a new special permit application and refer to the zoning, planning, building, and engineering department for a public hearing.
Motion made in second. The application be received and sent to zoning, planning, building, and engineering for a public hearing. On the motion.
On the motion, Mr. President. We'll take this up in committee.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none. Roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zagrowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Valkier.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Shamsky.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labree.
Yes.
Yes.
Twelve yes, one abstention.
The motion passes.
Okay. We have an application for a new junk dealer's license applied for by EcoATM LLC at 1600 Memorial Drive inside the Price Right. Vending machine to recycle used cell phones.
Concha Brooks.
Make a motion that the order be received and referred to the License Committee for a public hearing.
Motion made in second. The application be received and sent to the License Committee for a public hearing. On the motion.
We'll take it up in committee.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none. Roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zagrowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Valkier.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Shamsky.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labree.
Yes.
Twelve yes.
The motion passes.
We have an application for a new junk dealer's license applied for by Chickaby Bouillon and Coins, 40B Center Street.
Concha Brooks.
Make a motion that the order be received and referred to the License Committee for a public hearing.
Motion made in second. The application be received and sent to the License Committee for a public hearing. On the motion, please.
We'll take it up in committee.
Thank you. Any comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none. Roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zagrowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Valkier.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Shamsky.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labree.
Yes.
Twelve yes, one abstention.
The motion passes.
We have an application for a new junk dealer's license applied for by video game giants at 40 Center Street, buying and selling used video games and accessories.
Concha Brooks.
Same motion, Mr. President.
Motion made in second. The order be received, the license, new application be received and sent to the License Committee for a public hearing. On the motion.
We'll take it up in committee.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none. Roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zagrowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Valkier.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Shamsky.
Kushein.
Labree.
Yes.
Twelve yes, one abstention.
Thank you.
2025 Class 1 License Renewals, Bob Pion Pontiac.
Concha Brooks.
Make a motion that the license renewals be received and referred to the License Committee for a public hearing.
Motion made. It's a, I got it. It's a renewal. It's a renewal, Shane.
Unless there's a problem.
Unless they're approved this evening unless there's any concerns with the existing restrictions.
Okay. Motion made in second. 2025 Class 1 License Renewals be approved this evening. Any questions from anyone on the floor? Any concerns? Anyone on Zoom? Seeing none?
Any concerns?
There is no concerns. Okay, roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zagrowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Valkier.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Shamsky.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labree.
Yes.
Twelve yes, one abstention.
The motion passes.
48 through 51 are 2025 Class 2 License Renewals, Allstate Auto Max LLC, Chuck's Auto Sales LLC, David Damaris doing business as Pioneer Auto Sales, Fairview Auto Salvage.
Concha Brooks.
Make a motion that the license renewals be received and approved this evening.
Motion made in second. The 2025 Class 2 License Renewals be received and approved this evening with the restrictions. On the motion, please.
Any concerns? If not, I move to approve.
Any concerns from the floor? Any concerns from Zoom? Seeing none. Roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zagrowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Valkier.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Shamsky.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labree.
Yes.
Twelve yes, one abstention.
The motion passes.
52 and 53 are 2025 Class 3 License Renewals, A Truck Collision Service, Inc., Fairview Auto Salvage.
Concha Brooks.
Make a motion that the license, Class 3 License Renewals be received and approved this evening with current restrictions.
Motion made in second. 2025 Class 3 License Renewals be received and approved this evening with the restrictions. On the motion, please. Any comment?
On the motion, as long as there's no concerns.
Any comments from anyone on the floor? Any concerns? Anybody concerned on Zoom with these? Seeing none. Roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zagrowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Valkier.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Shamsky.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labree.
Yes.
Twelve yes, one abstention.
The motion passes.
54 through 55 are 2025 Autobody License Renewals, A Truck Collision Service, Inc., and Yagari Autobody.
Concha Brooks.
Make a motion that the renewals be received and passed this evening as long as there's no concerns with current restrictions.
Motion made in second. 2025 Autobody License Renewals be received and approved this evening with restrictions. On the motion. Seeing none. Any comments from the floor?
If there's no concerns.
Yep. Any concerns? Any concerns on Zoom? Seeing none. Roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zagrowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Valkier.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Shamsky.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labree.
Yes.
Twelve yes, one abstention.
The motion passes.
2025 Auto Repair License Renewals, Allstate Auto Max, Bob Pion Pontiac, City Tire Company, Gallagher's Old Fashioned Service, Inc.
Concha Brooks.
Make a motion that the license renewal be received with current restrictions.
Motion made in second. 2025 Auto Repair License Renewals be received and approved this evening with restrictions. Any concerns on the floor? Any concerns on Zoom? Seeing none. Roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zagrowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Valkier.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Shamsky.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labree.
Yes.
Twelve yes, one abstention.
The motion passes.
2025 Auto Detail License Renewals, Allstate Auto Max.
Concha Brooks.
Make a motion that the license renewal be received and passed this evening with the current restrictions.
Motion made in second. 2025 Auto Detail License Renewals be received and approved this evening with the restrictions. Any concerns from the floor? Any concerns from Zoom? Seeing none. Roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zagrowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Valkier.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Shamsky.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labree.
Yes.
Twelve yes, one abstention.
The motion passes. Okay, we'll go around the room. Concha Brooks. Concha Brooks.
Happy Veterans Day, everybody. Thank the veterans you know.
Thank you. Concha Goff.
All set.
You all set? Concha Kushein.
Yes, I'd wish everybody over Don Roy's Autobody the best of luck in their future. It's unfortunate that the media had to leave out the most important part of his closure[1192.87]
It is under investigation, and we hope to have more information soon. So thank you again to the Fire Department. I also want to thank the residents who came out last night, also Tom Murphy and our city clerk Keith Rattell, to a little neighborhood meeting that we had regarding rumors of a development, to talk to residents, inform me and many others who showed up about what is being proposed, and I'll leave it at that. And I also want to thank Clerk Rattell's staff for all the hard work they've done in the last three, four weeks in regards to the election. To my knowledge, I believe they stayed till, I think, 12:30 at night, so I appreciate everything they did. And I also want to wish every veteran a happy Veterans Day. Thank you.
Concha Balakir.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I also want to extend good wishes to the clerk's office and thank them for their hard work for having another election without trouble, and kudos to them. I also wanted to extend some sympathy to Attorney Dan Garvey's family with their mothers recently passing. May she rest in peace. Also, traffic, again, it's getting darker with the time change. Please slow down. We talked about speeding, and that's something that people need to be mindful of. And also, to remember Veterans Day, which is coming up, freedom is not free. Thank you.
Counsel Zagrowski.
Like I always said, if you see something, say something.
Thank you.
I usually get many reports from the Police Department because I'm in constant touch with the public relation officer. I don't have the report for the month of September, October yet. But certainly, you know, speeding is an official, as you've seen, a lot of public safety issues were brought up this evening, and, you know, money's being well-spent. The police are out there, but they can only do so much. So, you know, don't be afraid to call the chief. I speak with the chief probably every couple of times a week, and various officers there.